We'll begin with our invocation by Pastor Stephen Husaba from the Northfield Hills Baptist Church, hallowed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all will join me in standing, please.
Let us bow our heads as we come before our gracious Father. Our gracious Father in heaven, we come with thanksgiving for the great mercy you give to each of us each day of our lives. We thank you for the warmth of your son today. We thank you for the beauty of your full moon tonight. We thank you for Mayor Daniels. We thank you for the city council. We ask your blessings upon them. We ask for wisdom and for guidance and truth through the coming year. We ask that the city of Troy be a blessing to its residents and to the cities around about it. And truly, Lord father, put our hands to the plow and do what's required of all of us, as we give thanks to you. In Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The January 9th, 2012 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
Form present, would someone like to read the resolution to excuse Councilman Fleming? Councilman Slater?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Wade Fleming at the regular city council meeting of January 9, 2012, due to a family emergency.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I would just like to pray for the safekeeping of the councilmen and Mrs. Fleming and their families. They endure this family illness and hope that they have a safe return home when they're able to. Vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have a proclamation of appreciation to Meritor Incorporated for the generous donation to the Troy Public Library. If Laura Clem, Martha Remski, Julie Girishy, and the council would like to join me at the podium, we can make this presentation. The city of Troy proclamation of appreciation to Meritor Incorporated for generous donation to the Troy Public Library. Whereas Christmas came early to the Troy Public Library in the form of a substantial donation from Meritor employees and private individuals for a collection of materials and equipment to enhance the library's special needs collection. The focus of this donation is visual impairments and reading disabilities, particularly those in children with albinism. And whereas a generous monetary donation was given to the Troy Public Library to purchase large print materials with emphasis on novels for ages eight through 12, nonfiction books on visual impairments, and magnifiers to assist in reading. And whereas the Friends of the Troy Public Library also contributed towards this project to purchase kits with special reading materials and magnifiers that children can use at home. The materials will help children who have visual impairments such as albinism, dyslexia, ADHD, traveling eye, and inability to see color, and more. And whereas the initiative for the project came from a group of southeast Michigan businesswomen representing Meritor, Henry Ford Health Systems, GM, and Inforum. These women are part of a leadership class that included a community service project. The project was to increase awareness and social acceptance of children with albinism. Their interaction with the children brought to light the vision difficulties that are common with these beautiful children. And whereas the library's special needs collection was implemented in October 2007 by a gift from the Friends of the Troy Public Library. It includes traditional library materials such as books and DVDs, as well as interactive items that children with disabilities can use to enhance and promote learning and skill building. Children of all ages like to keep up with popular fiction, and this enhanced large type book collection will enable those with visual impairments to do just that. And whereas, to introduce the community to the new collection, the library has planned a storytime event on Saturday, January 21st, at 11:15 a.m. This storytime is designed for preschool-age children through second graders. Following the storytime, a tour of the new collections and materials will be given. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby thank the employees from Meritor for their generous donation, which will benefit the entire Troy community. And be it further resolved that the city council joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the generosity of the Meritor employees for the wonderful donation which will enhance the library's special needs collection and specifically help children who have visual impairments, presented this ninth day of January 2012. Would you like to say a few words? Thank you. Well, good evening, and mayor, council members, and staff, of course. I'm Julie Girishy, manager of Government and Community Relations at Meritor. As you know, Meritor is located here in Troy and is a leading global supplier of drive, train, brake, and aftermarket solutions for commercial vehicle industrial markets. I speak on behalf of 11,000 employees worldwide in thanking you for this truly special recognition. Specifically standing with me are two of Meritor's finest leaders, Martha Remski, Director of North America Supply Chain, and Laura Clem, Engineering Supervisor, who both led the way on this important community initiative with one mission in mind: to enhance the library's special needs collection to help local children who have visual impairments. This initiative, as well as many others, is just one example of how community service is ingrained in Meritor's culture. Again, thank you, and we are very proud of our employees, and this honor as they have earned. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, there are no carryover items, so we'll move to a public hearing to receive public input on the city of Royal Oak's hospital finance authority utilizing tax-exempt bonds for William Beaumont Hospital here in Troy. We have Dennis Herrick from Beaumont Hospital, he's the Executive Vice President, and Lisa Hagan from Miller Canfield, she's the financial strategy advisor that's going to make the presentation. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Actually, I'm Lisa Hagan with Miller Canfield, and we serve as bond counsel to the city of Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority. And under the tax code, you're required to have a public hearing, known as a TUFRA hearing, for the issuance of these bonds. And the bonds are going to be issued by the city of Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority for the purposes of refunding some prior bonds that were issued. And the proceeds of these prior bonds were used both in the city of Royal Oak and in the city of Troy. And that's why we're here today, having this TUFRA hearing. No new projects are being built, we're just refunding some prior bonds that were issued. And I'm here with Dennis Herrick from the city, from the hospital, and he can answer any questions that you may have.
Absolutely. And if any questions anybody has at all, we certainly...
The public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to ask questions or make any statements regarding this bond issue? Yes, sir, Mr. Kerrigan?
What is the interest rate in respect to pay on these bonds, and how does that compare with retired bonds' interest rates?
The existing bond on the Series 2001 issue was five and a quarter percent. We're going to a shorter interest rate, that'll be one and a quarter, something like that. So there's substantial savings in relationship to what's motivating us to do this transaction.
Mr. Kerrigan, if you'd like to continue the discussion, if you'd come to the microphone...
And how long are these bonds going to be outstanding for, the ones that you're...
The existing term on the Series M issue went out to 2035. Those will stay out, but this transaction we're doing will be five- and seven-year debt. That will have an event at the end of five and seven years where we'll have to refund again. We're going with bank, direct bank lending program this time, which is a pretty comparable, common thing that municipal finance is doing currently.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Let's step aside for any other public comments.
Sure.
Mr. Peters, did you want to have a question brought forward?
Yeah, I think you don't...
Come to the microphone, please, before you speak. Come to the microphone.
Evening, councilwoman mayor. I would like to know where exactly these bonds are going for. And also, I hate to bring this up belatedly, but the issue of them using that park up there on 20 Mile Road for them to use that, when that was specifically, that park was made specifically for children, and I see cars parked in there all the time in that rental thing. And to me, this is really a big violation of our sovereignty. And I, you know, I hate to bring this up now, but I think Beaumont, in a way, is kind of acting, you know, they're flexing their muscles up there. And I'd hope that we reexamine that issue sometime down the road here. But as far as, I'd like to know if those bonds are going to be used for anything like that, for the parks, or they're just going to transfer from one to the other.
Okay, just a moment, please. If you'll be seated. Is there any other questions that need to be addressed? Yes, sir, Mr. Griggs?
James Griggs, a 30-year resident of Troy. You had a gentleman, it was allegedly a Beaumont employee at Troy Beaumont, ask, criticize our council because of the way they voted. Does upper management feel that way? With the train station, or nothing?
I don't know who that employee was. I certainly would not be speaking for the voice of management.
You don't have to address the public comments, and you'll have an opportunity to speak after we've got the questions asked. Is there anyone else that has a question? If you'd like to address the issues to us, please.
Certainly. Regarding a common employee, I don't, I didn't hear that comment, and certainly that individual wouldn't speak for the management of Beaumont Hospital at all. So, those aren't opinions reflected in anything we feel. So, with regards to the original bond issue, it was used, the proceeds were used to expand the west addition of the hospital. That's what the money was used for. It was all for plant and equipment associated with that particular expansion.
Yeah, there's no new construction associated with what we're here talking to you tonight. The bonds have already been issued, we're just refunding them, and nothing new is being constructed.
I see.
The park issue, I'm not sure I understood that question, or what we're asking about there.
I'm not sure. Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, yes, I believe that what the individual was referring to was the agreement that the city has with Troy Beaumont for parking, and that is an agreement, and there is compensation paid for that.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That now ends the public hearing. Would someone like to forward the resolution? Councilman Slater?
Mayor, I'll move the resolution as printed. Would the city attorney put it red? It's kind of lengthy, but would you prefer that I read this?
It's your discretion. It is several paragraphs long, and it has been printed and not been ratified, so I leave it to your discretion.
It's fairly lengthy, so I'll just move it as printed.
Second?
Second.
All right. Resolution forwarded by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion, please. Oh, was that Camp, oh, Mr. Campbell, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
We're down here.
Okay. Is there any discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We now move to public comments. There are, oh, let me see, 21 people that have signed up for, to speak. I'll announce the first five, and you can come up to the podium. I'll also be announcing when you have 30 seconds left in your five-minute timeframe, because that way maybe I can encourage you to finish up in the five-minute time limit. Because although we know we have brilliant speakers on all sides of all issues, we really can move this meeting much quicker if we can get to the business of the city of Troy. If the, also, if the audience would refrain from clapping, I would appreciate that. Maybe after everyone's done speaking, we can all give a round of applause to the speakers, just to recognize their contribution to the meeting. The first five speakers are Rob Kerrigan, John Vert, Joe Gross, Sandra Gross, and Manesh Bakshi.
Good evening, Madam...
Please, just a moment. John Vert. It looks like John Vert is not in the audience at this point in time, so we'll call Gordon Shepke as well. Mr. Kerrigan, you can begin. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Troy city officials. This comment pertains to the Troy Transit Center. I sure hope the citizens of Troy have a chance to see the how, what, where, and when factors before a resolution is passed committing the city of Troy to any expenditure for the Troy Transit Center. Don't you agree that the Troy citizens have a right to see how the cost and content have been reduced for this investment? What's in, what's out, timing, et cetera, before any contract is signed? Do you honestly believe that for a few days leading up to the night before Christmas, Troy council members, city officials, and Hubbell, Roth, and Clark could put together a credible revision of a rejected proposal upon which you could execute an agreement? We rely on your stewardship and common sense to allow for an adequate review and discussion on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. Mr. Gross?
Madam Mayor, please get us off the front page of the paper. The Free Press calls us fix. I agree that we shouldn't have the train station, but for different reasons. But you come up with this morality business. Homosexuality is a disease. Come on. You're not that...
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that? You looked me right in the eye and said you didn't say that, right?
I didn't say that.
I apologize then, if it's true. That's all I have to say. My daughter can finish up.
Ms. Gross, no. Mr. Bakshi?
Mayor Daniels and all the city council members, I've obviously been pretty frustrated that this issue, which was pretty much resolved, in my opinion, on December 19, which was the drop date for Troy Transit Center, has been revisited. So looking at that, I have a couple of comments to make. The first thing I want to mention is Councilman Dan Slater has been very aggressive in promoting that this should take place. I'm wondering now as to which side does he really represent? The reason is very simple, in my opinion. There are two types of factions in our community today. This is at the city level, state level, and the federal level. There are people who work hard and pay the taxes, and there are people who want to live off the taxes paid by the hard-working people. So you say, "Manesh, what does that have to do with anything?" Well, let me give you an example. Just a month ago, there was an issue called "Seven-Day Keep the Library Open." Unfortunately, at that time, Councilman Slater could not find the money. Now, if he was that aggressive, he could have found the money. How? I'll give you one simple example. You may not agree with me, but let me just give you one example. Currently, if I'm correct, the city employees pay about 5% towards the health insurance premium. You can correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers. But if you work the numbers a little bit, if they go up to 30%, that they pay towards the health insurance premium, you'll suddenly find the money for opening another day for the library. As far as I consider, I have two young children in the community, and I love the library myself. All I want to mention there is that, how come that enthusiasm was missing? Maybe there is a little bit more down the road, if you look at it. I'm not specifically pointing to Councilman Slater here, but let me give you a couple of examples. Here I have in my hands recently election information that was received in the financing for the Oakland County. And this is what they say here, that, and again, these people are not here, or at least one of them is not here, because she got defeated. But if she received $2,000 from a special interest group, and you can figure out what that was. And there is another person who actually is here right now, and who did win, also was receiving campaign donation from a corporate corporation. So the question that you and I should be asking is, who represent the interests of the taxpayers in this community, and who represent the interests of the unions and other special interests in this community? And that is very important to me. Because some people might say, hey, Manesh, you're being very upfront, abrupt, et cetera. Well, let me give you some clear examples of civility that doesn't even exist for the people who claim to be very civil. In fact, Councilman Slater was introduced to a candidate not too long ago who was running for city council. He refused to shake hands with that person, and that person happens to be on this council today. Last time when we were here, we heard Councilman Campbell argue with the Mayor Daniels in a tone that is totally uncivil, ungentlemanly-like, for a person who barely won by 57 votes compared to the mayor who won by 600 votes. Why am I making all this conversation here? Very simple. I became active, very active, in the community and the political situation for one reason. I noticed that a lot of people were ignorant about the bias of the people who come and run in elections and vote against the interest of the taxpayer, which is exactly the reason I know Mayor Daniels, who I have totally supported, fought for the same reason. And I want each and every one of us to know that you should research the candidate you are voting for and make sure they have you on the side of the issues of the taxpayer and not definitely the person or the special interest groups. And I'm personally telling you very clearly regarding the Troy City Transit Center, when this issue had, was dead a month ago, and it was rekindled again, we must investigate who benefits from it, and why is this such an important issue right now?
30 seconds, Mr. Bakshi.
Yeah. And I must admit, to me, one of the things which has been also frustrating is, and I've not seen this in any other community here in the chambers, as a chamber has been acting almost like, in my opinion, the eighth city council member which is not elected, which is not even brought to the notice here. And I must admit, I would like to see more transparency, not back-room deals, which obviously have been happening recently. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Shepke, if you'll wait till I announce the next five. We have Paul Back, Marv Reinhardt, Anthony Nowakowski, Amy Weber, and Carl Cleland. Mr. Shepke, please come forward.
Mayor and council, my name is Gordon Shepke. I live at 328 Paragon. The city of Troy shouldn't have any, have the Transit Center or any other spending items on the agenda until the Downtown Development Authority upcoming bond default is addressed and solved. I went on the website, and I'm not really good at computers, but I finally got on it, and it shows the five-year budget, year budget projection. In the 2012, 2013, we have a surplus of $209,785, which is a plus, and that's good. But just a year from that, in the 2013, 14, we're in the red, $3,344,215, which is, to me, out of this world. And in 2014, 2015, we are $6,901,215. And as you take this down the road in 2015, 2016, and this is the Downtown Development Authority page I'm reading off of, is $10,538,915. And after that, in the 2016, 17, it's $14,229,15. I think it's despicable, because this can lead to nothing but default for the taxpayers. The taxpayers within a little over a year will have an additional massive tax burden placed on their shoulders. And I think this is due in a lot to lack of leadership by our city manager, John Zurelek, who is the executive director of the Downtown Development Authority, and several of the assorted members of that authority. Some of these are Mayor Schilling, and Michelle Hodges is also a member. There's too many members to really go down and get all their names, but the Downtown Development Authority has been, I've been saying for years, we need to, we can't disband them because of the indebtedness, but we can certainly defund them and make sure that they don't start up any new spending projects. Downtown Development Authority bonds were issued, sold, and spent on what I think are overpriced venues and window dressings of one kind or another that hardly are worth the tremendous burden of default. Now, we've got people from the chamber, plus people from the Downtown Development Authority telling us what a grand, they were parading up here telling us what a grand investment this Transit Center is. And they want to create more indebtedness, where we have a lot of fish to fry just to pay what we owe right now. Past performance is the best indicator of future performance, and the past performance of the Downtown Development Authority of the Downtown Development Authority has been lousy at best. I don't understand also why John Zurelek, the city manager, wants such a massive payday fund for the city. Is that to cover this default, or what's the reason for it? Because this thing is going to be painful for, like I say, the city, and it's going to be painful for the residents. And I think that these things should be number one on the city's business to handle, and before we start any more spending projects. We have to take care of what we owe first. I have to do that in my house. I'm not a CPA or anything, but I have to pay my bills, and I have to plan ahead to be successful. And I think Troy, to be successful, has to plan ahead too and stop this nonsense and bring this Downtown Development Authority under control. I know the last mayor that we had in here had a very poor attendance record, but John Zurelek, if he knew there was a problem, he could have, he sets the agenda, he could have put things on the agenda to warn the council. To me, when I look at this red ink here...
Thirty seconds, Mr. Shepke.
Thank you. Anyway, thank you for your time, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Paul Beck? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to see you sitting up there, but there's other issues to contend with. Looking on page seven of the agenda, a resolution sponsored by Mr. Slater says he wants $6.27 for the Troy multi-module transit facilities. I think we should pass that resolution as it sits, because that's a very good deal at this point. I know it's a typo, but it's $6.27, the way I read it. Number two is, this is the fourth year that the 2.5% wage increase was bestowed upon city salaried employees, which was costing us $72,000 a year. This is the fourth year, so it's going to cost us, the taxpayers of the city of Troy, $288,000 to pay for those salary increases. Number three is that Mr. Slater should forget about the transit center. We have more important things to do, and I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Anthony Nowakowski, no, Marvin Reinhardt. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, contrary to what the one gentleman says, there's at least one other party in the city of Troy, the bigger party of Troy. At least one other. We don't really care if you build the transit center. Out of $8.5 million, we will get our cut out of that money. Somewhere, somehow, we're going to profit, so whether you build it or not, it doesn't make a difference in my pocket, but I prefer you guys to build it. Two, one day I might run for the city, for mayor, so I'm going to let this out. When I started working at General Motors, they thought I was a homosexual, and it was up my butt 24 hours a day. Really, guys.
Mr. Reinhardt, could you speak to the...
Really. But I was convinced, because remember, 1975, General Motors transferred people from boys to girls, girls to boys. And I met many people at that time. They convinced me I was really a lesbian and a male body, which I accept. And that's the reason I'm bitching today, because this girl here cannot even say that word, and you guys are jumping on the girl. You understand that? I'll talk to you. You don't deserve the punishment these people gave you. You listen to the flaming drama queens crying about this word or that word. I can't believe it. If I go around saying I just like my women sunny-side up, they would get angry. But I can't say that, because it's not proper. But these people can run around saying it's okay, I like to suck certain parts of the body. I didn't say anything. And they run around with signs, dragging about it. Now, back in the '60s, we had a saying in the city of Troy.
Mr. Reinhardt?
The mother cow looks good.
There's...
I understand that, but these people...
Children that might be watching.
Well, I was in second grade. We knew who the transsexuals was in second grade in Troy Union. We knew who they were, and we knew exactly what Schroeder did to them. We also knew what Popovich did to them. So, you could say whatever you want, but I grew up the city, watched these people come into the city, dragged this city through the mud, and look at it. Fifty years, what do we got? Arguing over the word queer. That's all I see. I don't care. Build the transit center.
Mr. Nowakowski? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council, I'm a 33-plus-year Troy resident taxpayer, taxpayer, 33 years, right? I'm not a welfare recipient, have never been a welfare recipient. I grew up poor, and got where I am because I did. Now, I was extremely pleased, because I was almost ready to move out of the city of Troy, when I saw the people of Troy voting, people who voted down this transit system. I was ecstatic. Okay. I'm a grandfather, playing with my little kids, little grandkids. And now here I am, instead of being home, playing with my grandkids, two-year-old, two little girls, two years old, and here I am. Why? Because somebody is going to be a turncoat. Somebody is going to vote for the transit system. And I want you to know, I'm a taxpayer, 33 years. I want to know why. Voted down. We don't want it, we don't need it. And again, as a taxpayer, taxpayer, right? That means the federal money, that Obama money that everybody talks about, that's my money. Not his, not theirs, mine, not these welfare people, mine. And this transit system, to me, is another part of welfare. Vote it down, please. Wherever that turncoat is, change your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Weber? No, we're not going to have more than Ms. Weber come to the podium. This is the decorum of the meeting. Please, if you want to speak, sign up to speak next. Okay, thank you.
Can they stand here with me, because there are messages with me?
No, thank you.
They're here in spirit. That's Zach in Sky. Hello, council members, mayor. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak. We came here, the three of us, to introduce officially an event we would like to hold in the city of Troy called the Peace Rally. And basically, the subtitle would be "Coming Together to Promote Peace, Unity, and Diversity and Love in Our Community, State, and World." It would be a one-night event held in Troy, a location to be determined, gathering to promote peace and unity, to heal the city, and bring all viewpoints together in one space to demonstrate that differences can and should be respected, to promote a healthy, united community that embraces and celebrates all of its residents. Guest speakers, such as local celebrities, public figures, parents, teachers, mentors, and students, will be featured to share their personal experiences, to spread this message of peace and unity. Video will be used to present key historical figures that continue to inspire and lead us toward living in peace and harmony, even though we may not see the world through the same lens. Music may also be used, if a local band chooses to join our rally. And the discussion subjects will be bullying and suicide prevention for all, as well as the introduction of a peace pledge to become the new promise for a more united Troy, Michigan. And we spoke today, and I would like to request, and I'm going to submit in the morning, the Freedom of Information Act request for that recording that you taped today, because I think it's very important for us to sit and rediscover that conversation and really listen to each other. And with your permission, I would like to have that recording. And so, I would like to welcome all of you, council members, to be a part of this event. The city of, the youth of Troy has asked me to be a spokesperson for this. I'm very honored for that, and I welcome any suggestions you may have, and can contact Zach Kilgore or myself to share your thoughts and your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cleland? If you'll wait a moment, I'm going to call five people up again. John Timmons, Richard Peters, Cynthia Wilsher, Mary Ann Bernardi, and Scott Foster. Yes, sir, please.
Hi, my name is Carl Cleland. I've worked in this community since 1975 with Michigan National Bank in commercial lending. I'm now an Aflac agent, also in the city of Troy. I am in support of this Troy Transit Center, mayor and council members. From a common sense standpoint, for the business community, I had worked for Ed Russell, who was one of the founding fathers of the Troy Chamber of Commerce. I worked with Mr. Sam Franco, Yamasaki, an architect. I know those people, and I know that they would be in support of this transit center for the fact that, from a common sense standpoint, of helping the transport system, of getting employment back to this city. I go through this community today, and I see one in three industrial buildings vacant, or, excuse me, occupied. Two or three are vacant or for sale. There was such a great tax base in this city years ago. It was a model city between commercial, residential, and industrial. Now, I see that tax base switched completely. And I think, and it's a gold saying from Kevin Costner from "The Field of Dreams," "If you build it, they will come." And I think if that transit center is here, it would enhance the employment and the city of Troy into the future, where the city of today, tomorrow. And I think that will be true if you build that transit center. So, I'm looking for your support to turn that vote around and turn it positive that we build that center. I was at that site today, and I just see a vision of something that would be great for this city in the future, and I want to be part of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Timmons? Mr. Peters?
Good evening, council, mayor, folks of Troy. I just want to say I have nothing against Belmont personally. They actually saved my life, so, you know, kudos to them for that. I want to talk about the train center a little bit. Obviously, we're going to have some, if we go through this again, we'll probably have some time, and I hope the government grants us 60 to 90 days, so that we can reexamine the merits or demerits of this issue. And I believe that, you know, the saying is that, over the years, that when Michigan, or when the country catches a cold, Michigan catches pneumonia. And I think the real problem was, for so long, that we've been a one-industry town, that we really haven't had any diversity or stability whatsoever. I'm not saying you can tie the decline of the auto industry back to when they got rid of the trains initially, but it seems since that time, you know, it seems as though the area has kind of went downhill. So, I would hope that when we do reexamine this issue, that we do it with clear heads, and we get to the nub of the issue and feel if it's really good for the future of our city, and hopefully that we can cooperate. You know, John Stuart Mill once talked about the complacency of established ideas. And when he talked about that, he said that, this was actually about the Middle Ages, but he said that people should worry about things when they're on top of things, because what happens is they become satisfied with them, and they kind of get fat and happy. And I think with this transit center, particularly with the bullet train aspect and even the light rail, this injects new blood and new ideas and new themes for our people and for our country and for our city. And I would hope that in the upcoming months and weeks, that we keep that in mind as we try to surge ahead and fatten this issue out. And also, one quick thing before I go, I would hope that the Iranian government would agree to let the United Nations in, to maybe have a court there to try this individual, and if, in fact, it proves out that he's guilty, that they would agree to a prisoner swap instead of going down the road that we're going, and hopefully, Salam, and hopefully that will, you know, avert some kind of engagement that none of us would like to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Cynthia Wilsher?
Good evening, everyone. I've had a lot on my mind, and I need to get it off my chest tonight. Some on this council have commented that they are doing what the people elected them to do. The number of votes that you received are less than 10% of the population in Troy. According to the census, we have 80,900 people. The votes over what your opponents had is less than 1% of the population. You know, let's do the math. Did you people flunk math? That's not a majority. Ms. Daniels, you've got a lot of outside money to fund your campaign. You said you had a lot of community of support. If you had all this community's support, did they put their money where their mouth was? Why did you have to go outside of the community to raise large sums of money? And the newbies on the council here seem to be of the opinion, just like I said before, that you're Congress, you can do what you want. Did you know that currently, the approval rating for Congress is 9%? 9% of the people agree with what they're doing. I'm just wondering if you could do as well right now in our community. You don't get it. You were elected to do what's best for the citizens of this committee, not do your own thing. I'm amazed at the comments and the questions that are asked about the functioning of this city. Did any of you know anything about how the city was run before you decided to run for election? Have any of you served on any city committee or board? And have any of you participated in the Citizens Academy? This is citizens who care and had questions about how the city has been run, and they took this wonderful opportunity on a close and personal relationship because they cared about our city, and they wanted to be part of the solution and not create problems. It's very convenient to leave out a few facts or ignore them completely, or dismiss them as not being relevant. You need to expand your narrow thinking to include the value that is regional industries will receive in exchange for the added commerce that we might bring with the train station. Why would you restrict measuring our future value of the business that could be generated in terms of how many trains we have coming through there right now, or how many we had a couple of years ago? Resolving this crisis is essential to restoring a healthy economy that will only happen when this council acknowledges the devastation they have caused and become accountable for your actions. I don't know how many people you've talked to out in the community, but there is a lot of sadness over this whole thing. Pretty soon, if this isn't turned around, you're going to hear the voice asking for accountability, and it's going to grow louder and louder, and pretty soon, you're going to be gone. Since the new mayor and council members have been elected, all the news has been nasty, nasty headlines, letters to the editor. You will never be able to top all of the awards that this city has worked hard for more years than you've lived here. If you didn't like what Troy was about, then why did you move here? I've lived here more years than most of you are alive. I've lived here more years than most of you are alive. I've been a taxpayer for 50 years. I've raised five children here proudly.
Mrs. Wilshire, 30 seconds.
Okay, I've always been very proud of this city. But since you've come on the scene, I've been amazed and embarrassed by all the negative things that are going on. The group of noes can resign if you'd like and leave. Ms. McGinnis, Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Slater, and the city staff, I'd like to thank you all for keeping our pride up, because we're hanging on to you for good, whether you like it or not. We're depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bernardi?
I have prepared remarks, and I don't even know if I can speak them now because my heart is racing so much. First of all, you were all duly elected, okay? I respect each and every one of you, regardless of what group you're on. Mr. Campbell, I respect you. I respect you, Mr. Teetz, Maureen McGinnis, Janice Daniels, Dan Slater, Dave Henderson. I respect, and Wade Fleming has done something that I came up here to speak. I'm very angry about what he did, but I still respect him. He was duly elected. Thank you for your service. We pay you nothing to do this, and I know you put in hours and hours, all of you do. Thank you for being up here. I think it's time that the angry voices in Troy would just either shut up or put up and get, you know, just get out of here and let us get on this business in a civil way, okay? And apologize. Now, if I could say my comments. We were told by the city administration that the cost of the Transit Center absolutely, see, I'm so upset I can hardly read this now, that the cost of the Transit Center absolutely could not be brought down from $8.5 million. We were also told that December 19th was the drop-dead date. This statement was made emphatically and with complete certitude. It is clear now that neither of those statements were true. Given that, how can we believe one word from the city administration? However, we are asked to take their word that the capital costs will be held at $6.2 million. Even the resolution expressed that the $6.2 million was an estimated cost, and there are no penalties for going over that cost in the resolution. Likewise, we are asked to believe that the cost of operation and maintenance will only be $30,000, and everybody, even both sides, have acknowledged that this is a low-ball estimate. Two council members went to an unpublicized meeting behind closed doors with top-level decision-makers after the last council meeting. Apparently, deals were made that will reverse a decision that was made in full view of the public by the entire council. In my opinion, that goes against the spirit, if not the letter, of the Open Meetings Act, and also against the very new ethics policy that was recently drawn up. It makes a mockery of the democratic process, and if there aren't laws to prevent that, we should have them. Low taxes is a very strong advantage for Troy in attracting and keeping residents and businesses alike. This city administration is partnering with businesses in a manner which will destroy that advantage. The future will be bleak if this happens. Low taxes is what kept Dan and I, my husband, in here for all of these years, 22 to be precise. Mr. Zurek has frequently said that Troy's taxes are very low compared to surrounding communities. He says this whenever he is making a case to raise our taxes. I am always astounded by the fact that he does not see that low taxes is a vital asset to preserve our city and its assets. The resolution is, if I go back to that, does not address any of the other concerns that citizens have brought up. What about the cloud on the title? I wouldn't build a stick house on land that had a cloud on the title. Who will be responsible if the land reverts to Grand Sacoa after the building is constructed? $6 million is only a reduction of 20% of the original $8 million. This is federal grant money. What does $2, what does a $2 million reduction accomplish, other than possibly making it more expensive to operate? Cutting corners will also compromise safety and aesthetics, most probably. There is no mention of the cost of widening roads or who will pay for that. Of course, we know that residents will end up paying for everything, either in our federal taxes or in our city taxes. The businesses come to Troy with an open hand. They have, with the exception of some exceptional few, like in the beginning of the meeting. They have a long history of fighting for expensive boondoggles while they trot up to the council table continuously, asking to get out of paying their own taxes. By 2015, even the DDA debt is positioned to fall into our hands, into our laps, the residents' laps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernardi. Please, 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 let's continue the meeting. Mr. Foster, let me call the next five. Dale Marish, Donald Frazier, Rosie Frazier, John Witt, and Fred Eckout, please. Mr. Foster, welcome.
Good evening, distinguished mayor and council. My name is Scott Foster, proud Troy School graduate, raving Troy fan, and also new chair of the Troy Chamber of Commerce. Please accept thanks for being so dedicated, for your hard work resulting in the repeat designation as Michigan's safest city, along with our optimism and encouragement and support moving forward in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marish?
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to speak. The council made a wise decision last month, but has gotten nothing for it but grief. Most of the December 19th meeting favored continuing the project, but had weaker arguments. They leaned heavily on the, "We've been there, we've been working on this for 10 years, and all these important people are in favor of it." The council did their homework. Dave Henderson mentioned studying a thick pile of papers over the last five weeks. The majority thought it best not to spend $2.3 million just to build a bridge, elevator, and platform. No money was being set aside for depreciation and replacement of the building. The developer's lawsuit over the land was ignored by Transit Center performance, but will add to the project costs if the city loses in court. I commend Councilman Slater for trying for a compromise. However, it's not the same as what Councilman Fleming proposed as his top offer last month. It's $270,000 more, and three weeks past the deadline. $270,000 is more than our 2,000-square-foot house is worth. I'm assuming this includes contingency funds. If not, the difference is even more. I thought we had put this to rest. This latest proposal will result in more bad publicity for Troy if it's rejected, as it should be. My option C, conserve and improve what we have, has been posted on the Troy Patch since mid-December and could probably be done for less than the $270,000 extra that Transit Center supporters are conveniently ignoring. One of Stephen Covey's principles is begin with the end in mind. In the case of any Transit Center, this is getting people on the train or bus to get where they're going. People don't lay here for a cup of coffee unless the train's late. The Transit Center would not improve the bus service, but would be sitting empty all weekend when no buses are running. In contrast, 66 people a day use the trains with the 20 parking spots we have a quarter-mile away in Birmingham. Upgrading the station would solve many of the complaints raised as reasons to build a new Transit Center. I'm proposing a replica of the original 1831 Birmingham Station with double the area of the current shelter. It could have gas heat, a wood-burning stove, vintage benches, and hitching posts, but a modern electronic ETA board. It could be done with volunteer labor and sponsorships instead of government money. We already have the walkable neighborhood, upscale condos, and bike-friendly streets that were envisioned for the Troy side. There's a bike shop a mile away that would probably deliver bicycles if people wanted to rent them. We're giving up more than we're gaining by building new in Troy, except for the dedicated parking lot and bus station. Tourist attractions like Greenfield Village and the Detroit Zoo don't have bike rentals, though they would benefit because they're spread out. The only tourist attraction within miles will be right there, the $2 million footbridge, Troy's monument to big government. I plan to come to take pictures of the trains the first week before the windows get dirty, but it will be lightly used, only when there's a freight train on the near track, when people would be, when people want to cross. The most disturbing part of all this is it's free! No, it's not. Last week, the Congressional Budget Office reported that the president's 2011 budget will generate another $10 trillion in debt over the next 10 years. That's $25 trillion compared to $15 trillion today. 90% of our estimated GDP in 2020, up from 40% in 2008. America's debt-to-GDP ratio peaked at 109% at the end of World War II, while the ratio for Greece hit 115% last year. Our Washington politicians act like there's no problem with piling on the debt, but the more debt we have, the bigger the interest payments become, which dry up capital and are a drain on economic growth. The time horizon for most of them is the next two-year election cycle. President Obama will be long gone before the effects of his administration's overspending permanently cripple our nation's economy. Already, the recovery from the Great Recession is weak at best. The sooner we start, the easier it will be to dig out of this hole. Whatever you decide, play the positive for all it's worth. If you decide to build this scaled-down Transit Center, you'll have some jobs for a few years to offset $450,000 annual payments on a 30-year loan. Don't be backed into a corner and either be for A, the Transit Center, or you're B, blocking progress. You're saying yes to option C, conserve what we have and improve it, rather than start over and have something less useful when we're done.
30 seconds, Mr. Marish.
You can invite the presidential candidates to Troy to speak. They'll be in Michigan next month. Other conservative outlets will help spread the word of Troy, setting the example for Washington. Keep your money, we'll do it ourselves. The council's already weighed all factors in the $8.5 million proposal and found it lacking. This scaled-down proposal is less bad, but also deserves to be rejected. Let's think of our kids and grandkids. America first. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier? Donald Frazier? Welcome.
Thank you. I spoke three weeks ago at the city council here. I don't like doing public speaking.
Could you bring the microphone a little closer?
But I'm at a point of frustration, as an American citizen, that we have what people claim to be a free media or a free press in this country, and we don't have it anymore. We have Troy papers in the city of Troy that have been very one-sided, very slanted, very distorting in the reporting of the news about the Transit Center. If this is such a great idea, why, the people who are supposed to be on the Chamber of Commerce that represent business, why aren't they proposing to put some money up in case there are overages and somehow the taxpayers of Troy have to pick up the bill? And I don't think the negotiation on this, about government money that's free, is really the focal point, the topic. The real topic is, is there costs going to be incurred by the people who pay taxes in the city of Troy? If there are, and if you can't say there are not going to be any, then you need to rethink this. And if there are going to be monies that are going to be required for the taxpayers to pay, then why isn't the Chamber of Commerce, that's so in favor of this, willing to start talking about picking up the tab for it? The idea that it's free government money, and the news media is reporting that people want this, and the other point that was made that really irritates me. If you're in a, if you're in a society that has the, you have the capacity to vote, and you don't use your right to vote, you don't use the privilege to vote, you lose your right to speak and have your voice counted in what is decided is done in this city. So this idea that some people are duly elected, and they represent people who voted to man, and they don't have a right to follow through on their word because they have to look out for the other people who didn't care enough to get off their behinds and vote, is ridiculous. It's insulting to any logical person's sanity. I'm tired of hearing it. It's the same kind of mantra that the news media keeps dishing out to the American people, and this whole idea of this clandestine way of doing politics bothers me, too. I remember Nancy Pelosi looking in a camera and saying, "Vote on a bill 10,000 pages deep. They're going to radically change one of the biggest industries, our biggest financial things in our country, and do it without voting or without reading the document first." If that isn't a definition of insanity in politics, I don't know what is. And I see some of that same kind of mentality happening at my local level in the city of Troy. And you know what? I don't get the attention. I can't write an editorial to the news media, and I really expect to be heard in a liberal-leaning, slanted newspaper. But I can come to a public forum, and as much as I don't like doing it, it's probably the last free place that people in this country have to speak from, and I'm going to do it, even if I don't like doing it, because I want to be, my voice to be heard. I want the voice of reason to start happening back again in this country, because this is insanity, the way politics are being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie Frazier?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name, can you hear me? My name is Rosie Frazier. I'm almost a lifetime resident in the same home on Kirkton in Troy. I'm a Troy taxpaying citizen who's tired of having to listen to non-taxpaying people from neighboring cities voice their opinions at our taxpayer's expense. If we are paying our city workers for their time during these council meetings, we need to be mindful of how much of our tax money we are allowing non-taxpayers to waste. At the last meeting, Councilman Doug Teetz asked the public to state their names, city and address before addressing the council. Many ignored this request. I wondered if those who continued to talk when asked a second time where they lived were disrespectful because they were not Troy residents. I heard that Rochester Hills requires a driver's license as proof of residency before speaking at their meetings. I think we should save our city money by adopting the same policy. I believe we had the right to be forewarned at the last meeting that we were being forced to hear what non-taxpaying people from neighboring towns thought about our issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Witt?
Good evening, mayor and council. I was planning on coming today to congratulate you on a very wise decision on thwarting the Transit Center project and ending this ill-conceived, ill-time project. However, based on events that's happened in the last few weeks, specifically with two councilmen meeting to try to come out for the compromise, we're faced with this decision again. I think what we really need to look at is, so much talk is about just the money to build this facility. As Councilman Teetz so eloquently said time and time again last meeting, this is so much more than just the construction money. It's about the ongoing cost and the maintenance and the impact this is going to have on our city. We're talking about at a time when our city, we're having, we can't keep our library open seven days a week, we've had to lay off city employees, we've had to cut back on snow plowing, we've had to cut back on other services. Is this really the time to take a risk on a completely unnecessary luxurious boondoggle project? I would say no. Remember, this facility is going to have to be maintained, it's going to have to be lighted, it's going to have to be plowed, it's going to have to be policed. And these are all going to have costs. Now, I know the city administration has told us time and time again that these costs will be covered by contracts with private vendors who will rent out space at the facility to use it. Now, let me just remind you that we were told this seven years ago when we built Sanctuary Lake Golf Course, that, "Don't worry, we can spend $9 million to build this great British-style links course," which was totally unnecessary, we already had a long-established city golf course, and that revenues from the golf fees were going to far exceed, you know, the expenditures, and we were going to cover everything. Well, actually, let me tell you this. Sanctuary Lake Golf Course has lost money almost every single year since it started. So be careful about the projections this city staff, especially from the same city manager who keeps on telling you about covering costs. So, but the other thing we've got to look about this project is, is there really any user demand for this project? Let me say one thing very clear. There is no user demand for this project, okay? The Chamber of Commerce coming up here and saying they want it, they're not using it. The other special interest groups come up here and saying they're wanting it, they're not using it. Do riders really want this or need this new project to utilize Amtrak services? No, they don't. They currently have an Amtrak station. This is truly, as it sits now, a Transit Center to nowhere. No new connections, no new services, no new anything. It's a Transit Center to nowhere. Now, might someday it be a very good asset if there was a light rail system put in place in Metro Detroit or some other connection? Yes, but that hasn't happened yet. And as we've seen time and time again over the last couple of decades in this metro area, it's very hard to get agreement on any kind of regional mass transit station, regional mass transit program. Now, I'm actually a proponent of mass transit. I think Detroit would be good to have a mass transit in Detroit, but it has to be on a regional system, and it has to be connected. We can't just have one outpost on the outskirts of Troy connected to nothing and put Troy money at risk, put Troy's long-term viability and sustainability at risk, just because we hope at some point this will connect with something regional. So this is the wrong project at the wrong time for Troy. Once again, there's no demand for it, there's no guarantees that we're going to cover the costs to operate or maintain it. This is the wrong project at the wrong time. Let me just say one other thing about procedure. I think it's very disingenuous for the city staff and others to say December 19th is the drop-dead date, and we're sitting here on January 9th, now saying we can basically push this off until whenever we want to do it. We need real truthful answers from our city staff and city administration. It really shows that, should we have any confidence in our city manager specifically, that when he tells us something's a deadline, is it really a deadline? And it really asks us, should we have confidence in the other things he tells us, too? So I think it's time that we get serious about deadlines, we get serious about making long-term, fiscally responsible decisions for Troy. So I'm very confident to say we have three people on this council who make a fiscally responsible decision. We're looking for that fourth person. The citizens of Troy need that fourth fiscally responsible representative. I hope that person steps forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Mr. Eckout, if you could wait till I call the next five. James Griggs, Zach Kilgore, Sky Curtis, Aaron Deluski, and... James Griggs, Zach Kilgore, Sky Curtis, Aaron Deluski, and Bruce Blumenthal.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city management. First of all, I'd like to say that I think you're doing a great job, particularly with the library opening on Sundays. Now, I was there this past Sunday and it was packed. But this continuing dithering over the Transit Center sort of boggles my mind. I mean, on December the nineteenth, we were told that that was the drop-dead date for making a decision and decision was made. The city manager recommended that the decision be made on that day. I'm sure he had a lot of good rationale for recommending that date as the decision date and continuing to discuss this issue beyond that date runs afoul of his advice and all the rationale behind it. If the business community and the Chamber of Commerce are so intent on pursuing this idea, I think they should form a financial consortium to remove all the financial liability from the city. In five short years, the library millage will expire, and at that time, the city will undoubtedly have to continue to spend money to support the library, which is a much higher priority in residents' mind than the Transit Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckel. Mr. Griggs?
Good evening. James Griggs, Coride, Troy, Michigan, thirty-some-year resident. And I want to congratulate you on your election, breath of fresh air, one of the largest votes for mayor ever in the history of Troy. City manager, Zurlag, I'm really, really concerned with you. You emphasized the drop-dead date of December nineteenth. It's a huge, eight-plus-million-dollar contract. You said to media that that's the drop-dead date. You said that to the council, that's the drop-dead date. Now, all of a sudden, voila, when it didn't go your way or somebody's way, now we'll make it tonight. Oh, wait a minute, not tonight because the stars aren't lined up yet. We'll make it another night, but we aren't going to tell you when. Are we going to be voting on the train station in 2020? You know, it's ridiculous. This is a large amount of money. The way these federal contracts are written under the current administration, the city of Troy taxpayers are liable if anything doesn't go right. We've got to maintain that train station for a long time, twenty-four hours a day. And if we close it early because we're losing tens of millions of dollars, we can't unless we pay back the eight-point-six million. And eight-point, what was it, eight-point-six was the absolute minimum that you could build a train station with? And now, all of a sudden, we can build it for six-point-something? Or did we chop a lot of stuff off and later on we'll say, "Oh, gosh, we've got to add this in," and the taxpayers of Troy are going to have to pay for it? To me, it's just crazy. I have no confidence in the city manager of Troy anymore. I mean, this is a huge mistake, not a small mistake. The Troy Chamber of Commerce, I'm very disappointed in. But then again, the Troy Chamber of Commerce Club is made up of non-residents and Troy residents. It does not represent the business community. They have approximately seven hundred and fifty paid memberships, less than seven percent of the ten thousand eight hundred Troy businesses. Ninety-three percent of the businesses at Troy do not belong to that organization. It cannot claim any significant representation of Troy business. The Chamber of Commerce president, Michelle Hodges, I don't believe lives in Troy. I don't believe she lives in Oakland County. I don't believe she lives in Macomb County. I think she lives in the Ghost Points. Ghost Point and Macomb County do not have a train station. Why isn't she busy there? By the way, Macomb County and Ghost Points are doing fine without a train station. We, on the other hand, have a train station on the north side, about four miles north or a couple miles north of the city of Troy in Pontiac, and a couple miles south from the city of Troy in Royal Oak. And we also have one on our border in Birmingham. Why would you subject the residents of Troy to this financial wreckage when we need to have the library open the seventh day, we need to have policemen back in the schools, and more police on patrol looking for crime? Crime has been going up, in my opinion. I resent Mr. Frank Irwin of a Canadian company, Magna, trying to threaten Troy taxpayers with reprisals for the Troy council votes. Magna made it clear that Frank Irwin does not speak for Magna. The kingpin of Magna is a fantastic person. He made that company what it is, and he's a true auto pioneer. Magna, in a press release dated September twenty-second, said that Magna International wishes to clarify the comments made by Frank Irwin, Magna's manager of government affairs at the last council meeting vote. "The content of Mr. Irwin's private email to the Chamber of Commerce was based on his personal reaction and does not represent the position of Magna International." It's a Canadian company north of Toronto. "Magna is proud to be a business partner. Of all the communities we operate in and the city of Troy, that includes the five facilities and a hundred employees, it's always business as usual."
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. I forgot to give you the thirty-second. I was interested in what you were saying.
Thank you.
Zach Kilgore, did you want to speak?
So I think it's kind of strange that rules for speaking apply to some people but not other people. This wasn't the first time anyone's come up here to talk in a group. It's been allowed before. I just don't know what was up with that. City staff said it would be okay. Not sure what happened there. And a quick comment I have to make is, it's not a free country if freedom of speech isn't applied equally to everyone. So I just think that was a little strange. My next comment is specifically to Doug Teetz. At the last meeting, you asked for people's addresses publicly, you know, and this commotion at home, it can be watched online, anyone here can write those down. And, I mean, you're familiar with politics, you know how it can be very divisive, and it can be dangerous. I mean, I've been called the devil and things like that, and I'm kind of scared of what people can do. And I think that it was dangerous, if not just irresponsible, to ask for addresses publicly. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Curtis or Ms. Curtis? Thank you.
Not married yet. Yeah, hi. I just wanted to address the council and urge you all to consider coming to this Day of Peace anti-bullying suicide prevention event that the mayor is going to hopefully bring up later on tonight, if I read the agenda correctly.
Well, we have, I'm going to ask the council about a suicide prevention meeting, yes. Something different, though, from what you're talking about, I believe.
Okay. Well, if the events are all sort of in the direction that I think they are, this is a really, really important event, not just for the entire community to really heal from all the negativity that's been going on in the past month, but especially for the youth of Troy, who Zach and I have kind of ended representing by default. We have a lot of students who are really, really looking for something positive and a way to move forward from all of this, and I think that this event would be a great way to step in that direction. So if you could please consider listening to the mayor about that, we'd really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Deluski?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here because I'm in, I'm in favor of the Transit Center. And I'd like to bring up a few personal points, personal observations. After, after, after coming to the first meet, after coming to the first city council meeting, I, I didn't know much about the Transit Center. I didn't know much about the location, and I wanted to, I wanted to see it for myself. So I went over there to the location, Birmingham side and the Troy side. It's a beautiful location, a lot of potential. On Birmingham side, there's a greenway. I'm a bicyclist, by the way. I ride a, that's what I do, I commute. I bicycle. The greenway there connects to the apartments at the Hazel Street Apartments, and the Hazel Street Apartments have nice shops there. They're specialty shops right now. And this greenway connects directly to it, and the greenway also connects to Cole Street. To anybody listening right now, all you have to do is go on Google Maps and go to the overhead map of the location, you'll see the greenway that lines up there. The greenway is a beautiful greenway. It's about twenty feet wide. It's a nice pathway. Anyhow, I figured that people from the Hazel Street Apartments would be able to traverse the greenway to a railroad crossing. A railroad crossing would, I don't know how to say it, save them a lot of cash or whatever. It would bring down the cost of the project. At Cole Street, a railroad crossing would be ideal. And I also wanted to mention that the nearest bus station around there is located at Meyer, and it's just a glass booth. I think it would be neat to have a nice bus station there, seeming how the Smart Bus is headquartered in Troy. I think it would be sort of fitting. I also think a job, a job hub that would, that would be accessible to anybody there, a job hub, maybe sort of like the kiosk outside, that travelers would be able to search jobs in the area and stuff like that. Anyhow, I'm more for a railroad crossing at Cole Street. Like I said, check out the Google map or whatever map you want to look at. And like I said, the greenway is already in place, all it has to be, is cleaned up and paved. And it would bring business from Birmingham into the Troy shops on the Troy side, those being Target, Kohl's, Home Depot, stuff like that. I guess, I hope, I hope anybody who's listening understands what I'm trying to say. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Blumenthal?
Good evening.
Good evening. Just sat home watching a council meeting. Heard a lot of comments being made, and I thought, well, maybe I can make it. Before that, this morning, and by the way, my name is Bruce Blumenthal. Everybody's touting our credentials these days. Lived at forty-two sixty-four Tolman for forty-one years, paid thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in all kinds of taxes allotted to this city. Don't begrudge a penny of it. I was interested to hear Dean Slater on the radio this morning, being interviewed, and to correct some of the comments that have been made tonight, I guess. The reason the thing, this has gone from eight-and-a-half million to six-point-two is because we eliminated some things, the green aspects of it, which I think is sad. One of the things we need to be doing if we're really Americans, and we all like to tout that little issue repeatedly, we should be doing everything we can to reduce our dependency on foreign oil. Those are small steps in that direction. Second point I'd like to make tonight is this. I've said it before, evidently bears repeating. Any elected official has one very basic responsibility, a mandate, to make decisions to do the most good for the most people, whether it's the federal government or, say, council. We forget evidently that for years and years and years, the business community here that all of a sudden are on our bad side, paid roughly fifty-five percent of taxes into this city for years. It's the reason we lived as well as we did, were the services we had, were the tax structure that we had was relatively cheap, inexpensive. Businesses have been driven out of this city worse than residents have. And if I understand it correctly, that is about flipped. And I find it interesting that we're so willing to poke our finger in the city or in the eye of this business community, all of a sudden, the Chamber of Commerce is suspect. Everybody's involved in it is suspect. What are we doing, council, to reestablish the business community in this city? Ignoring them? Defying them? Defying is probably the wrong word. Disrespecting them? You know, taking a finger, stuck it right in their eye? A lot of people heading for the exits in this city.